I wanted to start this meeting off with an apology to anybody that was here last time. But I let the meeting get emotionally charged and didn't keep it in check as I should have. And so tonight, I'm gonna be better at that. And so, you know, I'd ask that zoning board members included here. We don't use inflammatory language, or tone, or attitude that might incite emotional, you know, feelings to start to arise. And if it happens, we might just take a recess. I might just ask you to, you know, stop and regroup. But definitely, there's just, we wasted a lot of time on emotional issues. We don't, I don't want to do that again. So I need to apologize to Mr. Holt for welcoming me to the hot seat. And I meant that as completely as a joke. Anybody that's gonna testify, though, is gonna have to come closer to the microphone. And so that's all that, all that is. And it's closer to all of us, which might make you feel comfortable, or uncomfortable, or uncomfortable because you're in front of people having to speak, instead of being able to speak from the back of the room. And I know that can be uncomfortable as well, so...
I've used that same statement when I was interviewing someone. You'll take the hot seat over there, you know, kind of thing, so...
Okay, well, Gibbs used it for years.
No reference.
As a welcome to come up a little bit closer to all of us, so we can hear you. And that's all it was meant to be. But I'll make sure that I don't, don't use that kind of language in the future. Since the last meeting, I asked Randy Yednik, our Livingston County State's attorney, to organize a meeting with myself, Bob Young, whatever attorney was gonna be present at this text amendment hearing, or hearings like this going forward. And to help us get all on the same page as to what the zoning board feels the process is, what the process actually is, and how we all have to work together to make a good record for decisions to be made for our county. And so we did have that meeting, and we're working through, sharing what Tom's gonna go over with us tonight before we start, the general process that we're gonna follow tonight, and that we intend to follow for all our hearings going forward. And that should help, hopefully, dispel some of the tension that there might be between zoning board members and county board members, and we all are understanding what our roles are, and that we're all just doing our jobs, and it's nothing personal. So we did have that meeting, and we're working on it. Tom will go over the process here in a couple minutes. One other issue that I brought up, and I just want to put it out there for everyone to know that I addressed it, or asked the question, is that Mr. Flott's been on the county board for a number of years, and there could be the perception that he's not impartial. You know, the zoning board needs to hear and act on the evidence that's presented, not on what our outside knowledge necessarily is. And Mr. Flott has a lot of background knowledge on this, which can be very helpful, but it could also make him appear to be impartial. So with Randy Yednik's input, Bob Young's input, Tom's input, they all felt that Mr. Flott can be impartial and will be impartial because he didn't have anything to do with the specific text amendment that's before us. So, you know, I raised the question of, the easy way around all this might be to ask Mr. Flott to recuse himself. They didn't feel that that's necessary. And so we'll move forward at this point in time with Mr. Flott being hearing everything, and we'll act accordingly on the evidence that's presented. Okay? So have Tom go over the procedures?
Yeah.
Or do you want to?
We open it to Rook Holt and Tom here.
Well, yeah, one other thing. It really wasn't clear, maybe when we ended the meeting last time, how we ended it. We recessed that meeting. So we're gonna take off from where we left off. Mr. Holt, you'll have the floor, and you can do what you want with that. So that's where we left off, that's where we're gonna step back in. I also want to address that this text amendment is a little, was a little confusing last time. We've already had a wind energy conversion systems text amendment in front of us a few months ago. We acted on it, passed it on the county board, county board acted on it. So we were all given, and Chuck may explain this in further detail, we were all given tonight, the text as it is, as it stands today, without the latest amendments or suggested amendments, but what happened, what came out of our last zoning case regarding the text amendment. So I'm not sure that that was exact, that was real clear in all of our minds, but as long as we need to understand where going forward. That was months ago. We acted on it, the county board, Ag Zoning, whoever wants us to now entertain new amendments to the same ordinance, or same sections of the ordinance, but we're looking at it with some new testimony and evidence being presented. So hopefully that will clear up any questions that zoning board members had any, and where we're at and why we're here. Okay? All right, thank you. Chuck?
Okay. Phil Holt? Just, in fact, this is July 6, 2017, continuation of recessed, you know, 2017, Livingston County Zoning Board Appeals Meeting, being held here at 75 Stewart Courthouse. This is the continuation, the hearing was on case ZP 317 proposed by the county board of Livingston, in which addresses the text amendments regarding solar energy. Phil Holt, Michael Cornell, Patty Casey, Richard Kiefer, Richard Ryan, William Flott, Gerald Earring, Joan Usman.
Here.
Do you want me to go ahead, bro, since I just accessed how you just mentioned it? I mean, all I simply did was make a copy of the Livingston Zoning Board Appeals Report Recommendation Regarding to the Application for ZP 13. And then the other copy is the ordinance, of which the county board approved, that the text amendment is ZP 316. So you have your recommendation, then you have the county board ordinance, which approves it, the county board ordinance, the areas that are underlined or the changes in it. So the second document is the actual one, and that is the document that is in force at this point in time.
Tom, can I copy each of those? Okay. My name is Tom Blakeman. Can you hear me, out there? Okay. I've been assigned to provide counsel for procedural matters of Livingston County Zoning Board Appeals, often referred to as the ZBA. I will review briefly the ZBA guidelines and procedures for text amendment, the various provisions of the Livingston County Code. This text amendment is being considered upon the request of the Livingston County Board, who is the applicant. In order to amend zoning ordinance, it is necessary to have a public hearing before the ZBA. Prior to the hearing, a copy of the proposed amendment may be submitted to the Livingston County Planning Commission for its review and recommendation, which recommendations are a guide to the ZBA, or its recommendation to the county board. A copy has been submitted to the Planning Commission, and their recommendations will be presented to the ZBA as part of these proceedings. The concurring vote of four members of the ZBA is necessary for the ZBA to report a recommendation to the county board concerning the proposed amendment. The ZBA has authority to recommend changes to the proposed text amendment submitted by the Livingston County Board. Any proposed changes from the ZBA are not binding on the county board, which ultimately decides whether the proposed text amendment is submitted, or with or without changes, is approved. Initial hearing shall occur on the date and time set forth in the published notice. That initial hearing was held on June 8, 2017. It was recessed and reconvened to this evening. Subsequent hearing days will be scheduled at the direction of the ZBA and announced at the end of each meeting. The chairperson of the ZBA presides at these hearings and shall have authority to control the hearing and proceedings, and may set limits on the testimony of witnesses, and schedule the appearance of other witnesses, and take steps for their actions as are deemed necessary to conduct the hearing in an orderly manner. The hearing before the ZBA is knocked down by the strict rules of evidence, and the ZBA members are permitted to question a witness at any time. The ZBA may exclude irrelevant or repetitious testimony, and any other testimony or evidence which, in the discretion of the chairperson of the ZBA, is not pertinent to the proceedings. The ZBA may also request additional information and evidence to be presented by a party. The order of proceedings is, first, we go with the applicant, who will make their presentation, followed by other units of local government, including school districts, then parties represented by an attorney, and then parties not represented by an attorney. After a party has testified, they shall be cross-examined in the following order. And by the way, everybody who wishes to speak before the board must be sworn and subject to cross-examination. The order of cross-examination is ZBA members first, units of local government, including school districts, interested parties represented by an attorney, other interested parties not represented by an attorney, and finally, the county as the applicant. There is no redirect or re-cross-examination. You actually, you get your one, you get one shot at presentation, one shot at cross-examination. The chairperson of the ZBA has a right to intervene and prohibit any inappropriate cross-examination. Evidence is presented in the form of testimony and/or exhibits. If you have exhibits to produce, if possible, please have at least 10 copies, so that the ZBA attorneys and other interested parties can have copies. And all exhibits, if possible, need to be marked for identification purposes for the record. After everyone has presented and been cross-examinated, there will be a brief presentation by county staff, which will include probably planning commission reports, and perhaps other exhibits involving publication notices. Thereafter, there will be a brief closing argument, and you must have testified to be able to make a closing argument. And if you are represented by an attorney, the attorney will make a closing argument on your behalf. The order of closing statements, arguments, applicant, units of local government, interested parties represented by attorneys, other interested parties not represented by an attorney. You cannot introduce any new evidence in the closing statement. And after the closing statements are made, the ZBA will close the hearing. They will then debate and vote on the text amendment, and the ZBA, in its discretion, may set a future meeting date with deliberations and voting. The ZBA shall report its findings and recommendation on the proposed amendment to the county board, and may cause an ordinance to be drafted for consideration by the county board. And that recommendation may be with or without changes. As mentioned above, the vote of the ZBA is only a recommendation, which is for the county board for its consideration. Now, in the event that there are, there is no county, ZBA, custom practice, guideline, rule, bylaw, ordinance, or state statute which controls the situation, then we will resolve any questions or problems by resorting to Robert's Rules of Order. Now, the, there is no court reporter for these proceedings. The zoning administrator, Chuck Schoff, is secretary of the ZBA, in response for keeping minutes for the proceedings and a record of examinations and other official actions. In case of an appeal, the testimony shall be transcribed from records kept by the secretary and furnished to the party appealing the decision of the ZBA. Does anybody have any questions? Most of you in the room, I recognize, you've heard this speech before, and I apologize for that. Right, ready to proceed?
Okay, Mr. Holt, you've already been sworn, so you continue to be under oath. The floor is yours to continue presenting where you left off.
Okay, thank you. In, let's start off with, in February, the Ag Zoning Committee made a recommendation to the county board that they hire legal counsel. The legal counsel that was hired is Heister, or Heil, Royster? Heil Royster, thank you. And John Redling Shafer is here as our county representative, our county attorney, and I turn it over to him.
Okay, do you prefer to be sworn?
I'm sworn, please.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you should give in this case now and appearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you have been guided?
I do.
Can you please state your name and address?
John Redling Shafer, R-E-D-L-I-N-G-S-H-A-F-E-R.
And we usually have to give your address as well?
Sure. 300 Hamilton Boulevard in Peoria is my office. That's sufficient.
Yes, thanks. You got it, Paul?
Chairmanwoman, thank you very much. Thank you very much to all the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Chairman Holt noted, the committee, in approaching our firm, asked us to participate as part of a process that certainly superseded many, many months and years before I got involved. And I want to start with my comments and thank yous with a heartfelt sincerity, because we understand what has gone into this. Careful deliberation has all that I've ever seen as being part of this, whether it be reading the ZBA testimony from past experiences, to participating in the Ag Zoning and Emergency Services Committee hearings and meetings. And it's that careful consideration from that committee that brings us here under case ZT 317. In terms of the description of evidence to be presented, certainly, we are here tonight to respect the ZBA procedures and protocols. We are here to provide with not only spoken evidence, which some have already been presented to you, but also certainly documents to assist you in making a decision. You noted during some original comments, and I appreciate this, we're back. And we're back after, again, that careful deliberation in that committee meeting addressed seven particular townships, those townships with unique characteristics, those townships that also, thanks to a county board willing to consult with the electorate, voted in favor of a particular setback in those areas. And so it's with that background that the committee gathered in March, at the end of March of this year, to not only approve the initial, and I believe Chuck, as you said, handed those out, those initial changes to the WEX ordinance, but also to consider additional changes for those seven. And on advice of council, I was at the meeting, it was my advice, certain substantive changes I felt were appropriate to come back to you. And those changes are what are in front of you, because in addition to, in essence, passing almost all of your proposed changes from the prior submission and application, this body felt that certain things needed to be carved out. And so based on that, there was considerable debate, discussion. Again, having attended that meeting, it's easy for me to say that, but certainly Chairman Holt will offer some specifics, but I would say this, in terms of my testimony, I feel it's important to give some background as to why we're proposing this in this fashion. First and foremost, I should, could certainly anticipate some questions about, well, why a text amendment? And, because if I look at seven townships, and that's clearly indicated on a map. Well, upon our advice, it's my opinion that, under the county's code, a text amendment is an amendment, obviously, to the text of a zoning ordinance that's going to impact the whole county, versus a map amendment that's simply, related to an individual parcel or parcels of land. And so what we have here, admittedly, I understand, addresses seven particular townships to a degree, but also changes that we'll go through that do impact the ordinance as a whole for the whole county. You know, we'll see setback changes discussed impacting the entire entirety of that particular ordinance, and in the end, trying to make sure that we are providing the appropriate procedure, it was our recommendation, proceed with a text amendment. Secondly, there may be some comments or questions related to spot zoning, and that is a legal concept that really does kind of fit the definition of its name. There's a particular spot, a very isolated parcel or area that is receiving a particular zoning classification, or special use, or variance. And again, we did not believe that this impacts spot zoning. What this is, is the culmination of countless months and years of balancing recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, from the county board, from the people of Livingston County, to address countless positions, and understandable and respectable positions for an area of the county, an area of a diverse county, that requires that additional attention. So what I would like to do, with the chair's discretion, is to call Mr. Holt back for additional examination, if that would be acceptable?
Sure.
Thank you very much, and I'll remind you, you're under oath, please.
Thank you.
Now, Chairman Holt, obviously, everybody in the room knows you're the chair of the Ag Zoning and Emergency Services Committee, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And during the March 2017 meeting, certainly, your committee deliberated all the changes that have been presented in case number ZT 317, correct?
That's true.
All right. And what I'd like to do is start by, and everybody can follow along, is to start going through the various areas.
Let me say first, there were 46 recommendations that they made. Of the 46, we agreed with 38 of them. So 38 were either something we didn't think of, or was better than what we proposed initially. So we didn't strike the whole, or try to change the whole thing. The only changes we made was to these five that we're gonna talk about tonight.
Well, and that's what I want to get to, are those particular five. And you would agree with me that the application was filed as the committee determined with and upon advice of council that these were substantive changes that required, out of respect to the ZBA process, to go back for further application?
Yes.
Okay. And let's start with the first set of change, actually, first change, and that's related to Section 56-1, adding the general definition of hearing facilitator. And Darrell, I want to discuss the general concept of the hearing facilitator with you. Specifically, could you describe the committee's thoughts as to the addition of this individual?
It goes back quite a ways. I guess go back to Steve Walters. When Steve Walters was overseeing previous hearings, he did a great job. Mike Cornell ran the meetings for this. The thing that appeared to us was that, to me especially, and others, was that you're asking the person to do two jobs. You're asking him to run a meeting, and also to ask pertinent questions and make decisions. So we thought that we should, he should have help, should have somebody to run the meeting. So one, in the zoning, the, it's actually in the Illinois compiled statutes, there's a part in there that talks about a hearing officer. And that hearing officer, as I read it, as we, as was explained to us, is a person that runs the whole show and doesn't have anybody else participating in the hearing. We didn't want that. We wanted the ZBA involved in it, we wanted their recommendation, we wanted their questions. So we wanted a job, a person, a title, for, that would be a participant, would basically handle the meeting, and that, for all intent, we've seen a person called a hearing facilitator, that as the description was, that this person ran the meeting, was a, had a legal background, and would take that load off from a ZBA member. Could help the process.
And so if I understand you correctly, it's not to circumvent the ZBA process at all. This person maybe would serve similar to Mr. Blakeman is tonight?
I would say similar to what Joan and Mr. Blakeman are tonight, because Joan basically is running the meeting, but that person would have his legal expertise, but yet run the meeting, and not, would not be a ZBA member.
Okay.
Would just, and would only be used for windmills, and if we ever get into solar farms, be used for solar farms.
And it's my understanding, the language here, both in that definition, and then later in 56-692, allows for the option of presiding. It's not shall, it's a may preside, correct?
Yes.
And again, the idea is simply to facilitate, as you say, but also not to vote?
No vote.
No vote, okay. So in addition to those interrelated changes, what I would like to do is then continue on with kind of the third prong of this application, that relates to the WEX ordinance itself. Now, Mr. Holt, you would agree that a number of the changes may relate to very technical things, such as a capital letter, or maybe adding owner, applicant, or occupant to certain phrases and paragraphs, correct?
That's correct.
Now, also, in addition, though, again, a reason for the text amendment would be related to the substantive changes. Those would include setbacks, changes to the setback provisions, correct?
Yes.
And also changes to other particular nuances as to the right-of-way, and perhaps shifting towers or bases, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So what I would like to do is walk you through a couple, obviously, the prominent ones, and that would be to go to Section 56-618H setbacks. And particularly, I'll draw your attention to H1. And in addition to clarifying that it's a WEX tower, that change, you'll note language related to exceptions in Round Grove Township, Dwight Township, Nevada Township, Rotten Township, Union Township, Odell Township, and Sullivan Township, a new setback is established. Can you tell me what that is?
The setback that we're suggesting is at least 3.75 times the height for the tower, or 1,600 feet.
Whichever is greater.
Whichever is greater.
And that would be from any primary structure?
That's correct.
And so...
I suggested at the last meeting, that at least be put ahead of the 3.75, and at least be put ahead of the 1,600, and at least be put ahead of the 3,250 feet.
Okay. So as I understand it, the, we'll call it, for short, the Zoning Committee deliberated the concept of addressing the referendum held at the prior election, correct?
Yes.
And that was part of the deliberation, but certainly gave further consideration as to other aspects in setting those numbers, correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell me maybe some other considerations and characteristics of the ground, or otherwise, that you felt maybe went in to that decision by the committee?
Well, I think that one of the primary things was that there's other windmill companies developing in that area. The other thing is that they, we didn't know when we asked for the referendum, how it was gonna turn out, had no idea. And the way it turned out was, it turned out as a cluster, rather than a checkerboard. As a cluster, it could be actually developed. But if it was a checkerboard effect, you pretty well have ruled out windmills in the county. That area is somewhat connected, Kyugie Ridge had been pointed out in the past as being very windy because of the ridge, that it, they had test towers out there, and took recordings of what the, what the wind was, and it was substantial for, compared to the rest of the county. The other, the other thing is that that, that area is not a heavy density housing, and that was one of the points that was pointed out to us at the hearings, is when you're, when you're trying to develop down by Fairberry and Forest, that there was a heavy density of homes in the country there that shouldn't consider that. So that was a, one of the things that was looked at. And I think the other thing is that it's, it's not, certainly not the worst ground in the county, nor is it the best. But it is a less productive soil, so there it could be a help to the farmer, if they were to get some, some income off of, other than their crops.
Okay. And you'll recall that there was some discussion at that hearing regarding the eighth township that actually voted in favor of the proposition on the ballot, correct?
That's correct.
And to your point just raised, that eighth is not contiguous or abounding those other sevens, is actually in the opposite corner of the county, correct?
And it's, and as Chuck pointed out to me, it's one of the best soils in the county. And it's... And it's connected to South Strater, so it's not a real dense populated, but it is populated more so than, and if there is a development to the west of them, they do have the opportunity, they could get windmills if they wanted them. It's just that they're not, should not, I don't think, be part of this ordinance, because they are separated from everybody else.
Okay, so, and thank you. So what we have here is a committee that not only tried to address carefully the setbacks from primary structures, but then also property lines in those seven townships as well, correct?
That's correct.
And so the setback proposed in the application, I want to be careful, proposed, not put in writing yet, would be setback related to H subparagraph three. And again, could you state the distance proposed in terms of adjacent property lines?
The, what we're suggesting, 1,640 feet, or 1.375 times the height of the tower.
So it'd be 1.3, at least 1.375 times the height of the tower in those seven townships?
Yes.
Okay. And the same deliberation and reasoning kind of went into that same decision that we've talked about?
Yes, yes.
All right, then I'd also ask you to turn to, oh, go ahead.
Just before you go away.
Yeah.
The other thing we've talked about was that the townships outside of these seven would have a different setback, so we have to take that into consideration when we're talking about our seven township setback. We don't want to infringe on them, so we have to take their setback in consideration.
Okay, thank you. Then going to H9, related to transmission facilities and poles, set already in the ordinance as shall be setback 150 feet from any portion of the edge of the primary structure, and then added unless located within the public road right-of-way with the approval of the proper township, county, state, municipal, and road authorities, and the approval of the property owner. That was also discussed at that March meeting, correct?
Yes.
And I believe, actually, it was discussed quite a bit. But it's my understanding, and I defer to you, the sort of discussion that went into that still relates to the idea of public safety and welfare in terms of placement close to the right-of-way.
Yes. And the, we, I have looked at different places where the high-power lines or power lines were running along the road, and I see where they're in proximity to the, they're within a 50 feet of the front of the house. So we're saying that 150 feet unless they're on the right-of-way, and they get the property owner's signature on it, get their okay.
Okay. All right. Now, moving forward to paragraph, or subparagraph N, we also have a reference and a strikeout of the word company to change to applicant, owner, or operator. That was to make sure we, going forward, capture all potential category of entity that could be an issue, right? But then also, here's a change that would impact the entire county, moving, if there's a proposal to make a change in a particular WEX project, that would move the turbine siding more than 100 feet now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and again, the committee, after some deliberation and discussion, including its recollection, voted to make that 100 feet throughout the county?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason being is that the, and I'm not sure the exact, but the base of the tower is like 60 feet, or 60 something. And so the concern was if we only move it 50 feet, and we're over a tile, or we're over sandy ground, or something that they can't put the tower up. And I think the real concern here was the noise level. You don't want them to get in, get close enough that they're adversely affecting the noise level at some home. So the object here was allow them 100-foot movement. That way they can get away from the tile or the sanding, and still not be any closer than the required setbacks.
Okay. And moving forward, you actually noted the noise level consideration. It's that same consideration the committee put forth that actually amended, or proposed to amend Section 56-620, related to noise level. In specificity, the owner, the receiving land, may waive compliance with local setback points pertaining to the Illinois Pollution Control Board Regulation for the owner's property. Again, that was a change proposed and approved by the committee to be part of the application?
Yes, that was, it came from Chuck's suggestion, is that, just to clarify what we're talking about, we're not talking about changing the rules on what the regulations are. We're talking about the setback points, so you measure from here to here.
Okay. So really, what I would say at this point, the subsequent sections proposed in the petition still relate to a county-wide application, but it is simply amending what was applicant to be applicant, owner, or operator, and I said occupy earlier, I apologize, but in essence, expanding the potential applicability to the standards we're talking about, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Holt now. Certainly, if you want me to continue with my case or open him up for cross-examination, I'll defer to you.
I have a few questions for Mr. Holt, so maybe it makes sense while I still aspire to ask clarification. Are you going to say something different?
I was going to suggest that you wait until Mr. Redlich Schaefer lasts, in terms of cross-examination, because he's going to be presenting witnesses. And take Mr. Holt right now, and then who are your next witnesses? If it's Chuck, for example, if you cross-examine Chuck, and when you presented all your witnesses and otherwise testimony, then you would be subject to cross-examination.
Sure.
Because you're kind of reciting as you go along, so.
Correct.
That would be my.
I just don't want, we may not have to go back to your tape then, because there's a question I've got for Mr. Holt on a specific comment he made that we can do.
Yeah, do that now, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead with Mr. Holt right now?
Okay, when you were talking about running township, and the fact that they voted in favor of the smaller setbacks, so they would be township number eight, just to use that for clarification, call it township number eight.
Okay.
I mean, they voted for it, but then this committee came up with reasons why they don't really need it, and you said that they can get them if they want them. What do you mean by that?
To my knowledge, they can submit a request to the county and be allowed to have windmills there. That there's nothing that they, I don't know that they have to go through any hearings or anything, but if they're going to put windmills there, I would think they have to have like a permit, a burn building permit, something, something to tell us that they're putting windmills up in their township.
Okay, I guess that's not what I understood you to say. I thought you were getting at why they weren't being included.
They're not being included because they're.
In the text amendment, even though they voted in favor of it, that they can get them if they wanted them, leaving the ordinance as it applies to them the way it is now.
With the way the ordinance is now, without these changes, they're basically at 3,250, even though they requested 1,600.
Right.
So that would have, we would have to, as a committee, as a board, change it if they changed their setback requirement for them. I mean, we, I guess if it's a stipulation, if it's a problem, I don't know that we couldn't include it, it's just that it doesn't work well with developing in that area, because there's only one township, one township would not, I don't believe, I'm not a windmill person. So I would say one township would be, unless they were across in another county and wanted to expand into Livingston County, like they did down by Flanagan. That's primarily a reason, reasons we didn't include them was because of, by themselves, the soil is better than most other soils in the county. The population there is more dense. There's, including them would be, I don't know that there'd be any benefit to them to include them. If there was, we should.
I think go back and listen to the tape.
I talked to Amanda, who's the.
Trying to figure out why I wanted clarification on that, because the notes that I jotted down.
I told the township supervisor, I talked to her, and told her that we weren't included here, and I didn't, she didn't really want to ask why, but she just said that they're out there by themselves, and they're the only one in that area that wanted the change. Be hard to develop one township.
You also made a kind of, it's item number four in the, I guess the.
Number.
About the soil types, you mentioned that the ground in the seven townships is less productive soil.
Well, and I guess I thought that this, that Chuck was going to provide.
So that might be for coming, I'm wondering based on.
Backup information for that.
Okay.
I just know from my personal experience that it's not as productive, but I can't speak for the whole county, what he has, speak for the whole county.
Oh, and then regarding the hearing facilitator and the placement of that, you mentioned that this might only apply to wind turbines and solar farms. But maybe this might be a question for you, Mr. Schaefer, if you're going to address it going forward, just tell me. The placement of it in the general definitions of the zoning section of the ordinance, does that leave it open to all zoning?
I'm actually going to have Chuck address that.
Okay. Okay, those were the specific things that I wanted to clarify, but we can address them with Chuck. Any other ZBA members have any questions for Mr. Holt at this time?
I just had a couple. Under the current ordinance, Darrell, would the development of wind turbines be allowed at 1,600 feet?
No. Under the current ordinance, current ordinance says that in the county, it has to be at least 3,250.
All right. Can I defer to Chuck and ask if there's waivers allowed in the current ordinance? If you want to be sworn in and answer the question. Or Mr. Oyster, or whoever, I mean, is there, are there waivers allowed to allow individual property owners the ability to allow development within 1,600 feet?
Chuck answering that, am I supposed to answer that?
Well, if you can, go ahead. If you can, then Mr. Schaefer will, or Mr. Owen Schaefer.
That's fine. I'll make sure that's addressed in Chuck's testimony as well.
Okay.
I think it's important, though, that Mr. Holt addressed this, in that I think that's a huge component of that ordinance, was the eligibility to have a waiver.
Well, and that's what I thought you were getting at, Mr. Holt, with regard to reading township, was that if they want them, they can have them, because they can, a landowner, property owner, homeowner can always waive that setback requirement. So I thought that's what you were meaning in your testimony, so I just wanted to clarify, but we can address that later, but are you familiar with that?
I'm familiar with waivers, in that I've discussed this at length with John and others, that I guess, I don't like waivers, and it's, to me, it's kind of, if they give me enough money, then it's okay to put this windmill next to my house. And so that's why I tended to stay away from that. It's, I did want to make sure that we had a minimum, that it couldn't be any closer, regardless of what the waivers were, or whatever they tried to work out with the windmill people, it couldn't be any closer than 1,600 feet. So that's based on, you know, the developer, the windmill people say that that's like 1,640 or something is the safe area if there's a fire. So to my knowledge, there's not a waiver there. But there is in the setback for property owners to the property line. There is a waiver there. Public roads, third-party transmission lines, community power, the county may waive this setback requirement.
And do you agree that the waivers would allow the property owner to forfeit any of their rights or concerns with diminished property values, nuisance concerns, or negative health effects?
I would agree with that.
You would?
Yeah.
You speak of the 1,640, and I would like, there's a lot of discussion about 1,640 that I haven't seen anything per se substantial to solidify that figure.
I think, Mike, that Chuck has something that he's going to present?
Okay.
At least, he showed me something that he was going to present?
Okay, all right, so possibly Chuck will have something for that.
I don't have that.
Got it, okay. Just one other, real quick. When you speak of the 1,640 and its ease of development, that it would allow wind developers to develop much easier within the seven townships? That was one of the reasons why you want that. Are you aware that testimony does exist from Mr. Massey that actually says that with the current ordinance, even the current ordinance in place, it's not impossible to develop just a little more difficult?
I'm aware of that testimony.
You are aware of that testimony? Okay.
One other question, Mr. Holt. This is regarding where you're changing the 50 feet, you know, to 100 feet. It was in that portion that we were talking about, that you mentioned the tower base is approximately 60 feet?
Yes.
I don't remember from when we learned the Pleasant Ridge, the bases, but is that for a particular height of the turbine? Are they all right around there? I guess I'm wondering where did that information come from?
Chuck's going to present that?
Okay.
The base, I didn't keep copies of it, I just looked at what he had, and.
Okay.
That's why we made the recommendation. That's why we made the recommendation.
Any other questions from the other ones?
Got one question. Was there, did the committee have any consideration about Nebraska and Waldo townships that have existing windmills there now? Even though there was a vote no, that if there was a proposed expansion to the current farm that's there, how would that be handled or could that happen?
We didn't discuss that. I don't, I don't know, you know, to me, I would say that the whole, that the balance of the townships have said that this is a town, this is a setback they want, thirty-two fifty. So for them to expand would be pretty hard.
With that new, with the new rule?
With the new setback. So I
I guess what I was getting at, this wa, these waiver things that we're talking about, is that, does that come into play for, for those two townships?
Sure.
I would think so.
Okay. That's it?
Okay, any other?
I have a question, but I think I'll wait till after Chuck, is that all right?
Sure.
If you want to question, Mr. Holt, now's your only opportunity to question either.
I didn't hear.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
As a member of the zoning board, if you want to ask Mr. Holt a question later, you can, we can absolutely do it.
I'll do, I'll do that.
Any other questions? Okay, any units of local government or schools with questions for Mr. Holt? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I can't. Okay. All right, are you with the unit of local government or school?
There's a seat right beside Mr. Holt.
Thanks, Bob.
Pop seat number two.
I did not say that. Are you with the unit of local government or school? Okay, you're just moving forward so you can hear better? All right, sorry that you couldn't hear me. All right, any other units of local government or schools with questions? Okay, any interested parties represented by an attorney with a question for Mr. Holt? Any interested parties not represented by an attorney with questions for Mr. Holt?
I have a question. If the development is
Yeah, can you hang on just a second, I need you to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Meti Calajas, two seven five seven five B three thousand North Road in Dwight.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask you to spell that.
Sure. First name is Emmy Y T E.
Okay.
Last name is C A L O E J A S.
Okay, I won't ask you to do that again.
Um, if primarily your interest is in this Cuyugia Ridge area, why can't they specify that in the changes? Is that something that cannot be done?
Are you saying only develop Cuyugia Ridge?
That's, that's my understanding of what you were saying, that that's their main interest, that area.
Well, all I was trying to do was to say that that, that area is, has Cuyugia Ridge in it. And Cuyugia Ridge has a greater wind velocity than basically the rest of the county.
And then your push to make these changes seems to be based on the poll that was done or the referendum that was done, which to me is like an opinion poll. And it wasn't an overwhelming win on that or, or yes vote or on that. Is there another reason for the big push?
Well, I'm a big proponent of economic development.
Okay, and you think that that's going to do it, helping the wind farms?
Well, certainly it'll help the farmers and it'll help the taxing bodies.
You don't think that it may detract from the, of town people wanting to move into it and put businesses in there because of the wind farms? Just do the opposite of what you hope will be the result?
To my opinion, yeah, I don't think so, but I, you know, there's been testimony that was the opposite, so you asked for my opinion and that's, that's my opinion, would not.
Okay, you're not worried that people will not want to move into an area that's filled with wind turbines that are unattractive?
I don't like wind turbines any better than anybody else, but I think they are economic development. Uh, and, and they are, you know, it irritates me when I, when I go and see them not running and they're not needed.
Okay.
You know?
And then I got one more thing I want to ask, primary structure, can I get a definition for that?
Home, residence, house.
Okay, but in the beginning, you have a definition for brown floor area. Is this related to the primary structure?
You have a copy of it?
I'm sorry, I'm
You have a copy of it?
Yes. In the, were you giving general definitions in section fifty-six dash one?
Go to page three, there's, the page is marked on the bottom, primary structure and wind. Sorry, Tom.
That's all right.
Are you planning to testify or provide evidence later in hearing when the opposite?
I would hope so.
Okay, that question might be better posed later because Mr. Holt didn't testify to it, gets a definition or anything and
Okay, sorry.
scramble to look it up.
I'm new to this, I'm not trying to
And I'm not going to shut you down, I just want
No, that's fine, he didn't testify to it, so I, I don't want to put him on the spot and have him try to look it up and define something. Understood, thank you.
And we will address that question before the hearing is over. Did you have any other questions though that Mr. Holt had?
No, sorry.
Okay. Any other interested parties not represented by an attorney, John?
John Visson, twenty-four, three thirteen east, eighteen hundred North Road, Pontiac, Illinois. Uh, you made a comment about them areas were least populated than the other ones. So why would the setback affect that if there's not as many people there?
There'd be more room to develop.
So they would, so the setback shouldn't make any difference, should it? If it's a bigger setback, it shouldn't affect them as much, should it?
If you
I mean, with a bigger setback, if there's people that are do not want it, which there must have been a few of them, that would help protect them from being too close, am I not right?
That, that is correct.
And then if somebody's sitting there that doesn't like that, they have the option, they have the option to waiver that, correct?
Want to hear my answer to one of your first questions?
What?
You, what you said was, if, if, if those, that area had thirty-two hundred and fifty feet setback,
Yeah.
that basically there is a, I don't, I don't, one mile in Livingston County that doesn't have four houses on it. One six hundred and forty acre, one square mile.
You don't know of any?
No.
What are you doing tomorrow night, I'll take you on a ride?
Okay. I've made other trips. But, but, but that's, that's what I, I believe will, will happen is that at thirty-two fifty, no one, unless they waive
What's, what's your proposal to protect the people that don't want them that close? That don't like it, they, they want the small, the bigger setback.
Can I make the same note that you put there outside of the testimony and asking, I mean, I'll leave it to you guys, but I, I want to allow the questioner, certainly his due right to, to ask certain questions, but be cognizant of a certain latitude.
Well, I, I believe that you did talk about, I mean, you mentioned specifically the smaller population and that's where John started with this question, so you did address that. What portion did John ask that Mr. Holt didn't drop, didn't testify?
Getting to his personal opinion versus the decision of the committee, uh, which is what really Mr. Holt's here in that capacity of.
Well, he asked if John wanted his opinion, so we left it out there.
Okay, okay.
We can stop it if now you don't want to
It's up, it's up to Mr. Holt if he wishes to answer the question.
Your question is?
Well, if, if it's least populated, how is it going to affect the development of the wind townships? If, if they still have the option, if people want it closer to their property, they still have that option, correct?
You're saying that they can waiver it.
They can waiver it, right, anybody can. The village of Forest wavered it and the one down there, I mean, it can be done.
As I said earlier, I, I personally don't prefer the waiver. That waiver is a buy, buy, buy this, if you're really concerned about health, health concerns, then have the, stay with the setback, it's, it's appropriate.
Okay, my, uh, of all the windmill meetings in the county, and I don't know the exact numbers, how many did you attend?
Uh, probably out of the thirty-eight, thirty-seven, maybe all of them.
There's more than thirty-eight windmill meetings in this county.
Well, I'm telling you how, that I attended just about all of them, if not all of them. And if you, you know, you look around, you'd see me there. I sat, I sat away from, I sat with the, basically over, so I could hear everything that went on and I was at virtually every one of them.
Then what was the number one thing that people were concerned about?
Yeah, inject irrelevance.
Okay, well, it's a fine line because you, you did bring up other, other wind farm hearings and things that came out of it, but we'll stop because I feel the tension's starting to rise, so we'll, we'll, we'll bring up, if this question, you still have this question later, John, I think we can address it. I won't forget. Did, did you have anything else for something that, that Mr. Holt, okay. Any other interested parties? Judy?
Um, hi.
Could you state your name for the record?
Judy Campbell, twenty-eight, eight-one-six, north, eight hundred east road, Manfield, Illinois.
It's, do I have the kind of score, I mean, I don't know what you
There's just supposed to be questions about things you testified to, so nobody, after all the other interested parties are done asking you questions about what you talked about, they're done, the only other people that can ask you any more questions are the government. So that's where we're trying to get all this out of the way. While you're, while it's fresh in your mind what you talked about and while Mr. Ridley Schaefer's got it fresh in his mind what you talked about. Okay, I know that you help a farmer somewhere, right? You're not a farmer yourself, is that correct?
That's correct.
But you have somebody that you
Walt Sanken over at Solomon.
Okay, and what township is that in?
I don't know.
The Solomon Township?
It's in Solomon.
Yeah, okay.
But we farm in Dwight, we farm over by Fairberry, we farm all over where the farm is.
How are the yields in, let's say, do you farm in Nevada, don't you?
I don't know, I guess without looking at the map, I don't, Nevada is, I believe is west of Dwight.
Yeah.
So, so we farmed in, a farm north of Odell, I had a hundred and sixty there. It was a farm that you had to be there there the right time of year, the conditions were just right, otherwise you couldn't get the colorator to ground. Which was just right, but no, the ground was not
You happen to, you happen to remember any of the yields on any of the farms in particular? Or yields or any yields?
No, but I, but I
Okay, just wondering, okay.
Yeah, I know. We try to get as good as we can.
Any other questions from interested parties not represented by an attorney? Thank you, Mr. Holt.
All right, thank you, and let me interject with an apology, considering Mr. Holt had the floor at the last hearing, I certainly intended to just continue that. I know certain questions from the ZVA are suited potentially for Chuck and he wasn't going to be my initial witness tonight, so I apologize for flip-flopping that, but considering where we were. Uh, but if you, I guess you need to be sworn in, I apologize.
Sworn or affirmed?
Sorry.
Do you solemn swear that the testimony you shall give in this case now on hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Charles Shope.
And your address.
One fourth of West Madison Street.
That's sufficient. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shope, and I know everybody in the room knows it, but can you please state your title with the county?
Uh, one of my jobs is the county planning and zoning administrator.
And I know you're where many have, so let's focus on that title for now. Um, it's my understanding that your, that particular title requires you to work closely with the Agriculture, Zoning, and Emergency Services Committee, correct?
That is true, yes.
And as, um, we, don't need to belabor the point, but over the course of many months and years, uh, that has required you to undertake a certain research and consult with members of that committee at various times, correct?
That is true, yes.
All right, um, at some point, we'll say last fall, a decision was made for a ballot, a question to be put forward with a referendum on the November eighth, twenty sixteen election, correct?
Correct.
Um, and it's my understanding that, um, well, let me just say this, um, with you tonight, um, what we'll call Exhibit Two is a specimen ballot with that referendum.
Correct.
All right, do you have that available, please? And yes, I know I'm starting with number two, I apologize, but Chuck, it's my understanding, oh, sorry, just like I said, sorry.
It's okay, I'm good, go ahead.
Chuck, it's, as portrayed on Exhibit Two, that is an accurate representation of what appeared on that ballot on November eighth, twenty sixteen?
That is true, yes.
Um, right, and, uh, obviously there were results of that referendum and, uh, as marked as Exhibit Three will be the county clerk's referendum results. Um, I believe you have copies of that to be introduced on the record as well, correct?
I do.
All right.
John?
John?
All right, and Chuck, in, in Exhibit Three, obviously, I'm not going to make you go page by page, but it's from this that um, anyone with a copy would be able to deduce that there were eight townships, uh, that voted in favor of a, of the question, meaning a distance of sixteen hundred feet between the wind turbines and residences.
That's correct, yes.
Uh, and seven of those appear in, as part of the setback requirement, um, in case, uh, ZT three seven
That'd be correct, yes.
All right. So what I would ask you now, um, as part of your role, we'll call it with consultation with that, I call it the zoning committee for short. Um, certainly that committee has asked you over the months and years to do certain types of research, um, related to various areas of the county and feasibility for wind farms.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and part of that research obviously would be wind speeds and more, where certain, um, speeds are viable, uh, more viable for a, a wind farm, correct?
That'd be correct.
Um, what I would do now is introduce Exhibit Four, which is, uh, in essence, a wind resource map that we'll pass out. Chuck, for the, the board here, can you explain what is depicted on Exhibit Four?
Uh, this is a search, I knew the map existed from our past wind farm experiences of the National Energy commissions and how they created these maps, so this is taken off of and how they created these maps, so this is taken off of a search that was done from that, from a national agency, the NREL. And what it depicts in the red area, if you look at the map, the key is the best reference to it, we see the red area there and compare it. Wind speeds over in there, color-coded area over here, it shows that the area in question does have a higher annual average speed at eighty meter level.
And by area of question, you mean the seven townships at issue in the zoning application?
Correct.
Okay. So based on this Exhibit Four, it would appear that an average wind speed of eighty meters would be some of the highest and most persistent in the state of Illinois?
Correct.
Now, would that be related to various factors, maybe including the fact of its presence on a ridge?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I know you have also researched the ridge map itself, and that is something that we have Exhibit Five to introduce tonight. All right, Chuck, now, it would say that this is a component part of the Livingston County All Hazards Mitigation Plan, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And that is prepared by your office?
That is correct.
And what are we looking at on Exhibit Five?
What I was looking for with Exhibit Five was a map that would show you, the best depict of a map I could find is where the Cugby Ridge goes through Livingston County. And then looking at this map, you see this dark line enters the north and goes towards the east is the Cugby Ridge. So this is depicting the Cugby Ridge, so it shows you where it's at, the best depicts it than any other map that I could find regards to that.
Now, kind of related to the ridge itself would be a discussion of a moraine. Can you tell me what a moraine is?
A moraine is, resolves some geographical things that have happened through the time and history with glaciers and so forth, and have lost different features throughout the county.
Okay, and to allow us to see that, perhaps Exhibit Six would be a, I would introduce to demonstrate the map features at issue.
Okay, basically, this is some issues that have been discussed in some past hearings we've had in the past. This particular document comes from the American Disposal Services of Illinois, application to this kind of, that also involved the fire gen, where they were seeking the site approval of a landfill for operating purposes, not waste facility. And in doing that, they, they do a lot of research in doing that, and they, remember since I sat in on those site hearings also, they had a document in there that kind of defined, defined the moraines, and that they also looked at the soils as far as placing landfills. And this particular document that comes out of this particular binder, which is volume one of seven, regards to this, and it was, you know, under the section of where they're kind of defining the land areas in this area, it's like their hydrology and the land that goes through there. And this is where they discuss some of the higher clear areas within the county and the reason for that. So this also showing the Marcelo's moranic system is also showing, as you can see, as it curls down through Livingston County, if you hear, is similar to the past exhibit, it shows you the moraine, and how it shows that feature going through the county also.
So in essence, if we were to look at Exhibit Five and Exhibit Six together, we're looking at a higher geographic elevation than other portions of the county?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So what I want to do now is switch a little bit to an additional factor that I know the zoning committee and Mr. Holt referenced earlier, and that would be soil and in the related surveys. Exhibit Seven that we'll introduce demonstrates that information. Sorry to make you keep passing this out. All right, now, who would produce the soil survey of Livingston County?
You have front of you was the United States Department of Agricultural and Natural Resource Conservation Service and cooperation with their local experiment station.
Okay, and this looks to be Page Two and Three with definitions. This is clearly a soil survey of the entire county, correct?
Correct.
And what does this map demonstrate?
First one, that was taken from this, we remember the last time you saw the larger map out of the book, so this is just a copy of taken from the larger map that out of it, what this is. But this map is basically, it's a soil legend, so it's giving a legend of the different types of soil that are located throughout the county.
So if I understand this map correctly, what we're looking at are soils in certain regions of the county with a higher productivity?
Well, they have productivity of every kind, as you can see, they can, they go from the ones down through the twelve, so you have the various productivity of the soils throughout the entire county.
Okay, and so it would appear that, again, based on the type of soil and other contents, certain areas would be less productive than others?
Yeah, I mean, again, if you, if you look at this, get a map, and as you see the yellows that they made to swing down through here, again, it's kind of defining where the Cugby Ridge is located at, it's giving the definition if you go to the soil legend on the nice bridge of the Bryce Lybret Association soils in there, and then the paragraph above that gives you some definitions about some of the permeability of the soils, so they can be less productive.
So if I understand it correctly, the one through three is related to the legend where it says nearly level to sloping soils that are slowly permeable, that section?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so in addition to soil, we heard Mr. Holt talk about also density and related issues that the committee considered. It's my understanding Exhibit Eight to be introduced is from the county clerk regarding census information on that density.
The county clerk each year.
All right, as we look at Exhibit Eight, I assume this is census data accumulated every ten years by the county?
What this is, is if you turn to the back page, it gives a reference to the Livingston County two thousand sixteen seventeen year book, which is created by Christine Nash in the county clerk's office, which does that. The reason why I gave this information to you, if you look at the U.S. Census information, it's more than one page, several pages, more difficult to look at. So I used this information, which is based off of the U.S. Census information, and this is much more concise and it's a lot easier for them to look at, because it has, you know, what the incorporated popula, or population is, total population, so you can see what's in the towns and what's in the rural areas, and it's all been a couple of pages, so it makes it a little bit easier for you to read and to digest, because most of the townships are hard, so going through several pages, so that's the reason why I use this. But it is U.S. Census data that the county clerk comes and puts in within their yearbook.
Did you use that, that data to make some calculations regarding the seven contiguous townships at issue?
Well, I reviewed the data here in regards to the seven townships, yes.
Okay. Would, did your conclusions lead to the fact that these seven contiguous townships have a density that's less than the remainder of the county?
Well, I think you have to break out incorporated and unincorporated, the rural areas, and if, when you look at the rural areas, you can look at those areas being, having a less denser than other parts of the county.
And focusing on the area at issue, I know Exhibit Nine is a map that you have obtained showing the construction of the wind farms. Can we introduce that with you?
It's a map I actually constructed.
Okay.
I'll explain it.
All right, if you can explain for us what we're looking at on County Exhibit Nine.
For what? Apologize for leaving a copy, but Jesus, when it is at this one time. Here, the clerk over here, you see the town of Kenton, which is on your far side of the paper here. If you look here, you see Amington within Livingston County. These two dark lines that you see here, this line here is basically where the Cugby Ridge South project located, at least the county stops at.
The one west of Amington? I'm sorry, I can't see what you're pointing.
Yeah, the one to the left of Amington, and the one to the west of Kenton, or just on their side, is the area where they newly constructed wind farm in Ford County stops, so it's constructed up to that point. So this area between here is the area that's left undeveloped, with a wind farm here and wind farm here, and this, these townships area, and here is part of the townships be considered now, so there is wind farm development in the area.
What I'd like to do now, Chuck, is begin addressing a couple of questions already posed, to try to address them and incorporate them into your testimony. Now, it's my understanding you have looked at turbine foundation plans in the past, correct?
Correct.
And Exhibit Twelve, again, I know I'm going out of order, but Exhibit Twelve you will have available to provide to the board regarding that foundation plan?
I do.
And you would agree with me that this is simply an example, and not an ad build or a construction-ready document, right?
What I did is, I went back into the Pleasant Ridge Wind Project application, found the plan that they gave is what they thought was going to be a typical planned tower foundation, and I'm presenting that.
For discussion related to, go ahead.
The only purpose, if you look up in the corner, yeah, this corner up in here, where it says the planned tower foundation in here, it gives you a width of fifty-four feet of being the width of that. I'm just providing this so that it takes the guesswork out of, you know, is that tower foundation, you know, forty feet wide or sixty feet wide? I'm just using this to say, okay, this is what we had as a document, one of our applications, says the planned tower foundation is fifty-four, fifty-four feet wide, and it's probably a fairly common plan.
Okay, and it kind of relates the idea of why the committee would have discussed the, the increase overall in the county of the turbine sighting to an actual hundred feet if there needs to be a change in the project?
That'd be correct, yes.
Okay. Now, all of your research, Chuck, culminated in a report, correct?
Yes, it did.
And that report, as my understanding, was handed out at the past, there's a original meeting that's being continued tonight?
It indeed was, but I have extra copies tonight.
And what I would like to do is formally enter it into the record as Exhibit One, for everyone to have it marked tonight. Do you prepare these reports for most ZBAA cases?
I do.
And in your opinion, why was one necessary for case ZT three-seventeen?
Because it is normal operating procedure that there is a report prepared so that the zoning board has been informed as to what's being proposed before then.
And the basis for these reports includes not only your own individual research, but information gleaned from attending various, well, in this instance, the zoning committee meeting?
That is correct, yes.
And you were present at the zoning committee meeting at issue in March, I believe, the twenty-seventh of this year?
I was.
All right. Twenty-eighth, excuse me, you're correct. No, I apologize, thank you. And so in essence, this is a historical representation of the considerations gone in, again, through your research, and then also the committee's deliberation to get where we are here today. Correct?
It's a kind of collaboration of different things, yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Certainly during the committee meeting, you heard discussion about, from committee members related to health and safety and welfare of the residents, correct?
For years, yes.
All right, and you also have an exhibit tonight here known as a safety sheet, Exhibit Eleven. I'm sorry, now I've gotten you out of order?
It's all right. We got it. We got it.
All right, can you explain to the board what we have here in Exhibit Eleven?
This is presented during the Pleasant Ridge Department of Arts Fair, Exhibit Number Three. And there's testimony in regards to state safety distances from, in regards to turbines. And in this case, it's a Nordex turbine area that they looked at. And you see that if you come down and see the danger box, it says the following turbine parts, you can, you know, read it just for yourself, where it creates a safety area of a radius of five hundred meters, which is the first one. And the next two pages, I just simply did the calculations of converting the meters into feet, except for, we're in the United States. So the first page just shows you the meter, a meter equals three point two eight zero feet, and then to calculate the five hundred meters, it comes to sixteen hundred and forty point four two feet, so that's read to the sixteen forty. So the sixteen forty is coming from this document calculated out from meters into feet, so that's where it comes from.
Obviously, your testimony tonight has nothing to do with Pleasant Ridge project, correct?
It does not, but that was an example.
All right. All right. Madam Chairwoman, I have no further questions for this witness, thank you.
Okay, can you just clarify, is Exhibit Was this? I don't have an Exhibit Ten in my stack of exhibits. Are we missing one?
Of that, if I understand, is the Regional Planning Commission minutes that I thought, in your regular deliberation, would be part of that, or?
They don't have them yet.
They don't have them yet? Okay. We're fine handing it out now if you want, or I know you had said?
Just clarifying that.
We need to do it because the back sheet, when I testified before, I had mentioned the back page.
Then let's, then let's go ahead to make sure it's consistent with the progress from my end. Exhibit Ten will introduce. All right, so Chuck, Exhibit Ten are, or appear to be the minutes of the Livingston County Regional Planning Commission meeting held on June fifteenth, seventeen?
Correct.
All right, and this document is prepared by you?
Correct.
All right. And it would appear you offered some comments at that meeting?
I did, yes.
Okay. And can you summarize what the minutes reflect?
Well, basically, what the minutes reflect is that the county commission did review it, did recommend the overall concept of being approved, but they were not totally satisfied with the language that was being proposed in some of those areas. I believe at our last meeting, I kind of went over those points quickly. And if you look at the back page of the minutes document that I gave you, is a copy of the changes that I mentioned at that particular meeting. And the minutes kind of reflect that, those are discussions and that.
You lost me. What minutes are you talking about?
Exhibit Ten, the Regional Planning Commission minutes.
Okay.
If you go to page three.
Oh, this last page?
The last page. You saw a copy of this page at the prior meeting, so.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just using this as a reference to make that work. So the three minutes, just a quick review of that, the three areas that they had where they wanted to consider some changes, or they got thinking if you had a primary residence in a proposed sixteen hundred foot setback distance, all right, this is number one, page seven setback, was across the road, the township which had the thirty-two to fifty setback distances. And they felt that the larger setback distance should apply to that primary structure, even though it wasn't a different township. So they wanted the wording changed to reflect that. So the attempt was made within the page seven setbacks to reflect, we're only five townships involved in this because Rock Grove and Dwight are surrounded by other counties or the seven townships. They don't apply this, they're not going to have conflicting township roads from other townships for thirty-two fifty. So this is an attempt to create some language that'd have all the primary structures, even in those five townships, be them greater, the thirty-two fifty setbacks from Wright Four X Tower as opposed to sixteen hundred foot, so that'd be inserted after what you have as existing testimony. And then the second one is on page eight, where we're struggling with the language for the transmission lines and how it was worded. And this is basically simply an attempt to kind of clarify that was, what was there, and that this would replace the language that was proposed on the green on page eight under number nine, unless approved by the proper township, county, state, or municipal authority, or the property owner. And number three is on page twelve, this is the noise factor for section fifty-six, six-twenty. There was a concern that setback was an incorrect word to be used in that new language, and put in a hundred and fifty feet measuring points. And the whole purpose of that, that has to deal with the Element Pollution Control Board reference in there. And the thought was that the way it was worded is that we possibly send, you could waive the Element Pollution Control Board regulations, and we can say that. So we're trying to do it so you can possibly waive the county's one hundred and fifty foot measurement, not the Element Pollution Control.
So these minutes are from another deliberative body and simply are recommendations?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And Madam Chairwoman, if you would allow me one further to address the ZBA pending question, the hearing facilitator, I believe there was a question from one of the members about leaving it open for other types of additional cases. Chuck, would you maybe offer some thoughts as to the hearing facilitator definition and why it's going to add it here to the general definition section?
First of all, you pointed out that the hearing facilitator was incorporated into the previously approved areas, that it was not incorporated into the actual hearing procedures. So the first two pages that you have after the application in my report, the first one was general definitions, and this was my idea, my idea only, is that if we're going to be taking it with the second page, six-six-nine-two, is regards to the procedures for special use and special use hearings. And this was to formally incorporate the use of the hearing facilitator within the special use hearings in order to do that. It was my opinion, I could be wrong, is that though the definition of hearing facilitators truly was placed in the approved wind energy area, I thought it wouldn't hurt to duplicate and also put in the general definitions because the next page, the fifty-six-six-nine-two procedures is part of the zoning regulations as a whole. So I thought putting the, defining it twice within the general definitions and also putting in the procedures for all special uses, just trying to at least clarify it. If I'm wrong, that's fine, but that was my opinion due at that time. And if you turn to the second page, you know, this is, is only for the exception of special use applications pertaining to wind energy conversion systems, which the hearing, etc., may be possible for the hearings resulting in them. It does not apply to the solar farms. The solar farm green that you see at the bottom of the page is just cleaning up the solar farm issues from the technology approved several months ago. It has nothing to do with the hearing facilitator.
So Chuck, if I understand you correctly, it's simply to provide a definition at the beginning because you reference it in the general procedures section of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, my attempt, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So again, whether it appears there or in the WEX ordinance, it is not changing any additional special use base?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Madam Chairwoman, I believe that's it for Chuck, pardon me, thank you.
It's ten till nine, let's take a ten-minute break.
Great.
And we'll come back with questions. Do you have more testimony to give? Is it Redling Schaefer or is it Schaefer?
Redling, I wish it was a Schaefer, it's Redling Schaefer.
You'd like to go lawyer to get that name changed.
Only I knew one, yeah. No, I, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, my questioning is done with Chuck. So at this point, if you want to cross-examine him, I will not have any further evidence for that tonight.
Okay, so we'll cross-examine you after we do.
That's fine.
All right, and I have the numbers of the zoning board, I don't know if you heard me well, but ten o'clock is kind of our cutoff time, if you're good with that. If you want to go later, we can discuss it, but that's about late enough for one evening. Okay, questions from the zoning board for Chuck? Go ahead and start if you want, my exhibitor's sitting here with the.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the question they asked, Darrell. Under the current ordinance, would the development of wind turbines be allowed at sixteen hundred feet? No, it would not. With waivers, would the development of wind turbines be allowed at sixteen hundred feet?
With waivers, yes.
Okay. Would the waivers allow the property owner to forfeit any of their rights concerned with diminished property values, nuisance concern, and negative effects?
It's a possibility.
Okay. Do you believe it impossible to gather the waivers for this purpose?
I have no opinion, it's impossible or impossible.
All right. All right. As a zoning administrator, you're here to uphold zoning within the county. Do you believe that in your professional and ethical opinion, are sound zoning decisions based upon popularity or following a predetermined zoning process as defined by a local zoning ordinance that considers overall use of land impacts on surrounding property, people, and entities?
Second statement.
That was a, is that your belief?
Repeat.
Okay. The preface with the zoning administrators, in your professional and ethical opinion, are sound zoning decisions based upon popularity or following a predetermined zoning process as defined by a local zoning ordinance that considers overall use of land impacts on surrounding property, people, and entities?
The second part of that, after the all.
Okay, so you do not believe that zoning decisions should be based upon popularity?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Comprehensive Plan 2021. Is there any language? You're familiar with the Comprehensive Plan?
I have a memory.
Okay, but you're familiar with, this is an adopted?
I know the.
Yeah, right, okay, okay. And this is information that has been used prior, and we allowed that last time, so at the previous meeting, there was some question about that. Is there any place in this that asks for a ballot question or a referendum to make a zoning decision?
Don't have the document memory, but to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing.
Okay. Do you agree? Or I guess the question would be, as a zoning administrator, what are the goals associated with agricultural land?
I have the copy of it to discuss. Basically, preservation of high-quality agricultural land.
Okay. Is there any, is there any statements made within that plan, within the agricultural section, that would mandate wind turbines to be developed within the agricultural footprint?
Not the mandate wind turbines being built on that.
Okay. The question as posed within the ballot was a non-binding referendum, is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, not a mandate?
Correct.
Okay.
It's about the terminals and pressure.
Okay. All right. As I look at the soil map, I'm going to have to dig out the exhibit. Well, we can, whatever number it was. The Ag and Zoning Committee makes the recommendation to develop the land with wind turbines because the soil is poor. And as I look at that particular color demarcated by yellow, would you agree or disagree that that color is over half of the map?
Right, I'm not going to say half, I'm right, it's a large portion of the map.
So based on the soil premise, the entire, more than just those seven townships should be developed, is wind turbines, with wind turbines?
There's more than, there's more than just those seven townships that have that classification located with that, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Next question on the election, and I'm bouncing all over because we got them in different order, but that's okay. You made reference to the county clerk and the density calculations. And then you said you broke out the unincorporated portion to calculate density.
I made, I made the statement in regards to, because if you take, yes. Give me just a second.
Okay.
I'm going, we're not expecting you to go, but I'm looking at. Obviously, if you're looking at the map, the seven townships concerned, you have the village, the county of Dwight Village of Dwight and Odell, they're in there. And as you all know, there's Aurora, Nevada, along the Dwight Country Club area, which has a rather good industrial development out there. So I made that statement in that, you know, the municipal areas of Odell and Dwight have a higher density in order, including with the townships. So my reference in looking at the census data, it breaks out the incorporated area where the census is incorporated versus the unincorporated area. So I did say that the areas that are unincorporated can be shown to have less dense population.
Okay. So under that same premise, you broke out the density, did you break out the votes?
I did not compare the, I mean, the votes, I did not, I did not break out the votes, I did not.
So someone in, in the middle of a community could be making a decision that would negatively impact a rural land on?
If you live in Dwight, you could be voting for something that affects the entire township of the country, that's the village of Dwight, that's your question.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Do, do these changes, certainly the proposal of the seven townships, follow the recommendation of the ad hoc committee? You were involved with the ad hoc committee, so you?
I, I do not remember, I had to go back and look and see what the discussions and so forth that had been involved with the ad hoc committee exactly were.
Okay. So. So...
But these came, the second text amendment came after the ad hoc committee had been dissolved.
So we've, we've, we made the text amendment with the, with the compilation of the ad hoc committee. We went through the process, and then...
The first text amendment.
The first text amendment, the one that's been approved, that's the current ordinance in place.
Okay.
Okay. And then we, we've come back with, with this recommendation based solely upon the Ag and Zoning Committee's intuition, or not intuition, intention.
You know, I think, I think throughout the whole process during the ad hoc committee and doing this process over, I think the Ag and Zoning Committee was always open for input, came from individuals in all areas too, so. I wouldn't say it was strictly on the Ag and Zoning Committee, I think they're open to having comments presented to individuals also.
Okay, all right. Exhibit eleven, county exhibit eleven. This Nordex.
Sure.
Who, who is Nordex?
Nordex and the turbine manufacturer, if you Google, you can find out if they're a turbine, they're a turbine manufacturer.
Have we in the county ever used Nordex turbines?
Not to the best of my knowledge, no.
What type of turbines do we use in the county?
GMA's turbine also.
G D and Vestas? Vestas, G, G. GMA's turbines. Do we have product... I mean, significant part of this zoning tax relies on a sixteen forty distance, which we can't demarcate what the distance is. And we certainly, if we've never used Nordex within the county, why, why are we looking to Nordex as a, as a, as the end-all be-all to base a zoning decision on that could potentially threaten the lives and well-being of individuals?
The simplest way to do that, it was some information that had been used before. It had been used in part when you determine, when you have the existing, it's text amendment one. We have setbacks from adjoining property lines at sixteen hundred and forty feet. It was based off this document here, we had it from the fifty meters you convert into that. So it's similar, it's being consistent with what you've done before with the text amendments for the distance.
But yet we don't have the information from the types of turbines that we utilize?
I understand what you're saying, but that's where it came from.
Yes or no?
Do I have any, it's probably available, I do not have it.
Okay. I mean, I feel like that's a pretty significant, okay. As we talk about hearing administrator, Chuck, what are your feelings with regards to the amount of public involvement at the public hearing zoning process?
Fairly involved.
No, I mean, moving forward, I guess, what, what is your... How, how do you believe the public should be able to interact?
I think they should be given an opportunity to testify and...
Okay. All right. All right. How, how do you feel the, the public can remain involved in the process while, while not feeling intimidated by time constraints and, and legal jargon that may persist with, with the usage of a hearing facilitator?
You're asking something I had no idea how to be used in the future, I mean, who knows, there would be time constraints put on people, number one. And we've had legal jargon thrown at us before past hearings, so I'm not sure it could be any different than it is in the past or in the future, so.
Okay. So to that, you couldn't speak to the cost savings, the time savings that might be associated with a hearing facilitator?
That is correct, I cannot speak to that.
Okay, so there is no evidence to suggest that utilizing hears, hearing facilitator would expedite the process at all? Are you, are you aware of any medical conditions associated with turbine placement within sixteen hundred feet of homes?
I, I don't. I don't think we need to get into all the tests that we've had in the past as a zoning day, because I mean, I have, obviously, through all the tests, I've been through all those zoning hearings, I've heard
Sure.
both sides of it all along, so I've heard the entire...
Right, right. But so, this is a general question, are you, so, are you aware of any medical conditions that associated with turbine placement within sixteen hundred feet of homes?
I mean, am I personally aware of somebody personally that's been affected by it, or am I aware that this is a testimony presented in the past, people have been doing it? I mean, there's two different, there's two different questions you have there. No, one, no, I'm not personally aware of anybody, but obviously, I've said in the same areas you have, where people have said there's a possibility of that happening for the opposites.
What about number two then?
What is number two?
The second, he said there's two questions, and he answered the first one. And the second question was...
The second question was...
Did you hear the...
I've sat through the testimony, I've heard the same testimony you've heard about before too, so.
Okay.
The consultation that I've got is, right, that's, that kind of testimony is a little large part of what we've always based our decision on. So would you say that that testimony from the prior hearings, that, that that still stands for consideration with this?
I can't make that judgment for you.
All right, I've got just a couple more, and then I'll be done. Chuck, are you familiar with the hedonic pricing model for value of homes as presented by the LBNL?
I, it doesn't, that figure being shot at me is not something I'm familiar with, I've got my head...
Are you familiar with the hedonic pricing model from the Lawrence Berkeley National Land Management? Okay, okay, all right. What are you basing your setback distances on to protect home values of those within sixteen hundred feet?
Again, we sat through a series of hearings regarding reform issues. We've had testimony on both sides of that issue, it's kind of a forty on both sides of those issues, and I think that's an extremely hard thing to determine based on all the testimonies that have been presented to you.
Okay. Would you, would you agree that the LBNL study, the HONE study, was a key component of infinite energy? They weighed heavily on that, on the basis of that?
I, I can't judge the, how much heavy is based on it, but they, I mean, they did present evidence.
They did, they presented, okay, okay. Are you aware of the LBNL August 2013 study, and page thirty-two actually says, "Further, the inside a half mile coefficients are more negative, less positive than their between a half mile and one mile counterparts, perhaps suggestive of a small property value impact very close to turbines."
I'm not, I've looked parts of the study, I'm not familiar with that particular statement, I don't know the context of it.
Here, I'll give it to you.
What page am I on?
Thirty-two, that should be highlighted.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Highlighted.
Yep.
All right. Testimony exists for real estate professionals that home values will be diminished by developing turbines this close to homes. Why are you not considering this in your determination as it is part of our comprehensive ordinance to protect values and the enjoyment of adjacent land uses?
I, I don't, I'd want to sit here and probably go through the more detail of this instead of just taking one sentence out of it, see what
Sure.
the context of both things is, I'd give you an opinion, because I don't want to give you an opinion.
I'm sure you have a copy.
I'm sure I do too, too, because I don't want to just take that one sentence out there and say, okay, this is my opinion on that, because I, I found that if you look and see the more details in the entire document, you have a total different opinion sometimes than you have just from the most stated.
So we'll leave that question open?
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, just let me mark it if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
Counsel, are you going to introduce exhibit?
Yeah, Mike, what did you, what did you pull out there?
See, LBNL study 2013, Pleasant Ridge, I can give you the number on it, thirty-six.
What exhibit number was it?
Thirty-six.
Infinite?
Pleasant Ridge.
Who's exhibit was it?
Pleasant Ridge. Okay, that's all I had.
I don't know, some of my questions might be better addressed by Mr. Redlin Schaefer, as overall, it kind of gets at what Mike just passed out, home values, and we have things that we've based decisions on in the past. Now we're getting new testimony that we do completely ignore those, those factors, so I think that's a holdup on asking you those questions, Chuck, I'll ask him, Mr. Redlin Schaefer, but would ask that you need to step in and answer that you do at that point.
Sorry, you're requesting that that be marked, was...
Well, I'm asking if it's going to be considered part of the record for this hearing, and if so, it should be marked as an exhibit.
ZBA, exhibit one?
Yeah. Well, it would be, well, yeah, because ours were labeled as county, so that would be your, agreed?
I, I don't have that with me, but I can, I do have that in my office document.
You want the 2020 plan, it's UCLC thirteen, I asked questions from it. County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, which one is it, UCLC?
UCLC thirteen, twenty twenty. I dug into the archives to get this.
Okay.
My boxes.
I have my boxes, too. All right, we can mark those for next time.
Okay.
Chuck, county exhibit nine, just a map. Can you describe what it depicts, you know, it depicts that there is less of anything, the line that represents the country ridge and east of Tempton, where that line is.
Yes.
It depicts a different incline, and this is the gap, right?
That is the gap, and that's the seven townships, which depict is that there is wind interdevelopment in the area.
Do you know where two town, two or three townships is represented in that gap? I'm just trying to figure out what the title is, what it's called, how to refer to it.
It would be Sullivan and... Mainly Brown and Sullivan, Main, Brown would be the main township that's involved in it. And I'm not familiar with the four county townships, I could say with the four county townships. Rogers. Rogers.
Any other zoning board members have questions for Chuck? Feel free to ask right now, if you want.
I do. And I might want to ask this of others. In your professional opinion, Chuck, would WEX companies be interested in any area of the county under the current ordinance, or would most companies look for areas where the ordinance is less restrictive?
I can't speak for other companies, for them wanting to develop, I mean, is it county, are they going to look at something that's easier to develop, possibly? It's one, I'm sure they look at all those factors, that's one of the factors they look at.
On your exhibit, on the exhibit that was presented, at, at just the Pleasant Ridge, the brown area is fair number three, you're using it to establish why sixteen hundred and forty feet is a safe distance?
Yes, I mean, I was trying to have some continuity from what was done before. First document, we had the sixteen forty difference. It established that difference from the adjacent property lines. Just to show that that sixteen forty wasn't pulled out of the air, that it was actually came from a document, it was part of some evidence that was previously used. So there was some use of some continuity of using some distances there and there, and that's what came from.
And this comes out of a safety manual for a turbine
Correct.
builder or construction company? It was based on fire and safety concerns, not necessarily on health and welfare.
It is what it says, it is what it says, it's safety.
I don't recall who submitted that Pleasant Ridge. What was the context of the testimony that was being presented there?
I have, I'm interested in the transcript and see what that is.
Okay. And on exhibit ten, that the Livingston County Planning Commission meeting, the minutes of that. This is the minutes of the May one, twenty seventeen meeting, so I'm assuming that they, the planning commission reviewed these and approved them, had no changes or additions to changes. Just like we go through and approve our minutes from the prior meeting, every month, every, every meeting that we start.
You're talking about the June fifth meeting?
Ask if there's a, any changes, additions, adjustments, anything that we want to make.
You're talking about the June fifth meeting?
Your exhibit ten.
The June fifth one, correct.
Okay, held on June fifth, yep, it's just your exhibit ten, I got the same document.
They have not, they have not met soon since, or they're not, they are either in draft form.
You're in draft form, okay. When will they meet again? I'd like to know if they have any additions or changes or...
They scheduled meet again on August seventh, is when they scheduled to meet.
Chuck, in any of the review that you did, did you, I know, getting back to Mr. Holt's original comment about the productivity of the soil and the townships that, that recommended we change the setbacks on? What, is it all based on soil type? I mean, does anyone look at yields of fields, or, you know, I look at that area, and as I drive through there every day on my way to the suburbs, they're a lot closer than we are, than the southeast portion of the county. So in my eyes, they're less dependent on some of their, the ground that's there because they're closer to development and closer to different more opportunities for employment, where in the southeast corner and some of the southwest corner, they might be less, more dependent on their, on the soil to provide income and that to support families. So I'm just wondering if, when we talk about productivity, are we just talking about soil types? Where does anyone look at true dollars and cents, like, are those, is that ground taxed differently because of the soil is different?
I just looked at the productivity, I didn't, I just looked at the soil types, I did not look at the taxing factors or anything that goes with that, so. Soil types are going to be similar tax wherever the township is located.
Okay, I'm just trying to get at the basis for that number, the number four point in the, I don't know what you want to call this, you're being used as exhibit one, I guess. Just want to figure out in total, what's the basis for saying they have lower productivity?
It's just taking the information that's shown with the exhibit that was in regards to the soil survey, which was kind of exhibit southern, and saying, okay, this area has some lower productivity soils, and it's comparison to all the parts of the county. And I'm, yes, does all the parts of the county have similar soil type? Yes, it does, there are harkises in this area. You have to calculate, you know, it's down each mile, but as you can see, you know, along that QB ridge all the way going through there, it has a lower productivity soil. And the anybody that's farmed at QB ridge can tell you that has probably lower productivity, so that's it. I'll talk to people farmed that area.
Okay. The word productivity, it says something to me that means dollar generated is income, where soil type then system equality is soil? Which, you know, does lead into what can it produce, but it just seems like using the word productivity would mean there's a lot more than just soil type considered in the conclusion that I've drawn, so. So what I'm trying to get at is, are there more thoughts, where there, if it's all based on the soil maps?
I did not look into the economics, I just looked at the soil maps. I did not look into the economics, I just looked at the soil maps.
Okay, so in your opinion, what's the driving factor? What's the, you know, if I go with the order that the, with the paragraphs are numbered, to me that would say the first and foremost, most important driving factor in what's driving this suggested amendment is the referendum. Is that a fair, fair summation?
You know, I mean, it's, as part as I did the report and I kind of broke it down into different factors, I think, you know, is it a part of it? Obviously it is, but I think you have to look at the uniqueness of everything put together that drives the whole thing, it's all the different points together.
Okay, when we talked and, when you're recommending the change from the turbine siding from 50 feet and we changed it to 100 feet. Replacement of this on the ordinance, maybe Mr. Rutherford Chapert can address this too. I know we discussed at length, material changes with an application that's submitted by, by a company that's interested in placing a wind farm in Livingston County. And once they submit the application, you know, what kind of changes can they make to the application that are not material enough to require an entirely new application? I need to go back and read this in its, in it, as it flows through the ordinance, but is that the intention that if, that if someone submitted an application, they can move the turbines now up to 100 feet and that's not considered a material change in the application? Or is this strictly?
They're probably, yeah, that's probably correct, it's not a substantial material change in the application.
Okay, I'll have to look back and remind, refresh my recollection on, refresh my memory on the, why we came up with 50, why we came up with 50 feet in the first place. So that if, I mean, at the base of the turbine is actually, what was that, 54 feet?
54 feet is an example, correct, yes.
As an example, yeah, so.
So you can't move, you know, if there is a tile there, after they do the soil, replace it in there, or if there's a sand vein in there, it couldn't be productive to put a foundation on, and then you're probably going to have to move it more than 50 feet since it's 54, the diameter to make it work, so you need to do that.
Right. Sorry, that really wasn't a question, I just needed to clarify my.
That's actually reduced from 200 feet in conditions before, so.
From what before?
I think QB ridge south, that wasn't in the ordinance, we placed in the ordinance, we placed a condition on it that allowed them to move 200 feet, so. So 100 feet still a reduction from what was previous, number one, it's never in the turbine ordinance prior to the text amendment. It's a reduction from those previous conditions.
And I had notes from our last meeting that said, in section one, H1, when we're talking about setbacks, in the green text color, we talked about 16, you put in 1600 feet, but we were actually saying 1640, right?
That's correct, and I did state at that time, the 1600 foot was put in there because that's the way we work within the advisory room. The 1640 is, well, that takes some consistency with what was down here before, and you know, for the safety issue.
So it's going to be, you wanted to say 1640?
We're comfortable with it changed to 1640. Uncomfortable with change to 1640.
That's all the questions I have for right now. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Chuck, after this becomes an ordinance, becomes a rule, you, in your opinion, do you think there will be need for future hearings?
For future hearings for wind farms, you mean?
Yes.
Which, the one that's currently in progress, the one that you're reviewing at present time?
No, I'm talking about one that ends up being approved.
The one that was approved at 32, 3,250 foot, is that that?
When this is all done, the one that gets approved. When we're done approving ordinances retained, I guess we'll never be done, is that what's? When we're done, will there be a need for future hearings if everybody follows the rules?
For future hearings regardless, only text amendments? Well, I can't, number one, I can't predict the future, so.
I understand.
I can't, I can't sit here and tell you, I really can't say that, you know. Wind energy seems to be a changing industry, above the right, depends on who the president, what is offered for incentives and tax credits and everything else, so I think it's a, it's a never changing industry.
So even though we sit here and make these rules?
I don't want to sit here and lie and tell you that's never coming for you again, is it good?
Correct. Are you getting that, that application, like a company coming in to, is like build a wind farm? Are you talking about text amendments and amendments?
There's no rubber stamp of approval, every wind farm development is still a special use regardless.
To go back and answer your question, if, if the text amendment that's before you tonight, one that will reduce setbacks to 1640, I think there's a possibility you may have a special use hearing in regards to that.
Okay.
Because somebody's making an application.
Somebody can make an application, a special use application for you to review.
I think you're also asking, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't mean to do something out of line, but I think you're asking whether there's any more text amendments contemplated in the near future?
More than anything else?
And I'm not aware of any text amendments, but I, this thing's been a little bit frustrating for a number of years, so you never know what's going to happen tomorrow, so. There's none planned, no, what is the plan?
Chuck, you said that we could have a hearing over the 1640. Who, who would bring that? Are you talking about an applicant or?
The property that we're using, the K4 project, over in that area, which was Key, Gear, Coryford, Livingston County, some of that land is still being leased, so if a wind farm company is still wanting to lease that property, if they're still spending money to lease it, you know, it depends on a whole lot of factors, you can't disqualify, they wouldn't necessarily file an application for that. But again, they may not decide to do it because of economic factors, too. I'm not saying they're going to, I'm just saying that, if they lease land and they could do it.
Okay, any other questions from the zoning board? All right, then we'll move on to.
I have a reason issue, just clarification. Now, it appears to me that it's kind of played that Chuck is going to be back to testify further concerning certain questions that you asked or answered, based upon review of documents?
Correct.
Okay. So we aren't really, and the ZBA, according to your bylaws, can do that, certainly you can request additional information to be provided. So that's what you're doing. So what I want to make sure is that we're leaving it open as to Chuck, as far as for testimony, questions or?
He would be eligible to be asked a question at any time during the process, correct? Just like Darrell.
Well, generally, when an applicant makes his presentation, presents his evidence, he's, you know, once, once he's done, he's done. He didn't get to present anything, so we're, we're actually leaving this open tonight, for the opportunity to come back with additional information concerning your issues, and what if they choose to raise, to present additional evidence? Which, which, you've kind of opened the door, you're, you're raising a question about the 1640, okay? Now, are they going to be allowed to come back and say, well, here's more information to support that? Or whatever?
Okay, tell us.
Well, I'm, I'm, it's your call, you have discretion to do that if you so choose. And that's fine, I'm asking for this clarification, you know, we could exceed my role as particular team, but I just make sure.
Well, to keep this moving forward with this, we need the question answered, and if you weren't planning to provide any testimony otherwise, then if you don't have any other testimony to present now, then you would be done presenting, all we need you to do is answer the question. That would be my thought.
Just.
If we leave it to, if it's up to the zoning board.
At this point in time, I plan, in looking at exhibit and reading more details, my man, my answer may reflect other information that was within that study, instead of just that one sentence that we brought on.
Yeah, and that's, that's the direction I'm going to, but you said it better than I did.
If his, if his delivery envelops more data from that study, then, then we may potentially question that data that he brings forward.
Well, that's, is he going to be allowed to do that, that's, that's the first step. If he is, fine, yeah, you can question it, there's no.
I mean, if he could answer the question tonight, then, then it would be a non-issue, but he chose to deflect.
Right.
I did deflect.
Or not deflect, differ, differ, that was just.
That question, they have to put it in context or.
Sure.
So I'm just, you know, we've never really had this kind of issue come up before, so seeking clarification in the call with the ZBA.
It draws it out, but I'm comfortable leaving, leaving it open that you can present more testimony. Everybody gets their opportunity here.
No, I'm.
Let's spend our stance on all, on all the other areas.
Well, I don't make the call, I mean, this.
It's a pretty significant portion of, of, of this decision is, is, is the negative impact on property value.
Right, I'm not disagreeing, I'm, I'm just saying, all right, so he's going to come back, answer your questions, and he will be allowed to present supplemental information as a response to what you're asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you ruling for the entire board here?
She's the chairperson, she has the, she has a right to make that call.
Okay.
By the rules.
I'm always open to discussion. That's why I looked at all of you, and if, if you have an opinion, though, let me know.
I sure do, I don't want to hear any more of the study, I've read it, I've been there, I've heard it. You know, there's studies and then there's studies, I don't need to hear any more of that.
Okay, but you didn't hear it in here, or as a member of the zoning board?
I heard the one sentence.
Okay. Well, I'm still going to leave it as yes, that you can present more, because we need the question answered. That doesn't cut, then it doesn't cut you off from whatever, else you pull out of that document. Just playing fair for everybody.
Does it, and, and again, open to the board's discretion here, does it make sense to maybe end on that so we don't lose sight? It's whatever you want to do, I know we're getting about quarter till, it's up to you. But, I mean, we could leave that open as our last, or if you want to proceed with other questioning, we can. I just didn't know if that would be a logical stopping point.
Just thinking out loud here, so lay in, zoning board members, if, if the additional testimony is going to be, draw questions from interested parties and objectors, then we should stop here.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Otherwise, we could get some other questions out of the way in 15 minutes, but if, if we're going to go back through the whole list again, then we won't be saving any time.
Makes sense.
Okay. So we need a motion to recess, and remember, we need a date and time. And I'll just throw out there, I am not going to do it at our August meeting. And we have a lot of other cases to address at our August meeting, is that accurate statement?
That is an interesting, we have to go back and do.
And you're guesstimating on how long those cases would take us?
Since there is a couple of things that could be time consuming, I would just assume it's going to take probably five weeks. I don't want to bring everybody in and sit here and have a possible 45 minute on this, and I have to come back again. Is our next meeting August 10th?
10th. So we can come back before that for this, for this issue, for this case? Or we can, I mean, calendar is open, except not for, not for August 10th, I went either August 10th.
I think September, I agree, we need some room.
Well, you guys, you can do the regular meeting, someone else can act as chair, and the regular meeting can still go on as planned. I just, I didn't even need to say that, I'm sorry. So the calendar is really wide open for us to pick another date for this case to recess to.
Because this can be, we will, and all I mean, so we can go pure.
I would assume it's going to take us at least another one.
Done in August. If you've got something to ask me done in August, we need to have it in August, we need to have some question just for this, we just.
All right, somebody throw out a date. Do we want to look at the week before? I know that would be bad for me.
That's my wedding anniversary. You answered her.
I see, I'm in trouble now.
I'll give her, I'll give her your number.
The week before, the week before our other regular meetings, so July 31st, we're on this fourth. Availability. When's your, when are your meetings, Richard?
The first?
Second.
The second. Okay, so the first week is, does that work, does any of those nights work for anyone? I like Thursday nights.
The 3rd?
August 3rd.
August 3rd, is that regular or is that this?
That's this, regular is August 10th.
You're not going to be here.
I'm not going to be here August 10th.
We're going to not have a meeting then, are we?
Sure, yeah, somebody else can, you don't need to chair.
See, we're not going to have.
Oh, you're not going to have that, well. Everybody don't have high status.
She said she would be here August, I believe, I talked to her today, but she's here, I'm out, I'm out.
Yes, there, the forum's gone.
Well.
We need, we do have those weekends, we need to, so, I mean, I'm not, because I pushed, I pushed them away from tonight into August.
We can maybe talk about the 10th after we recess this. We can stay on the record, but we need to pick a night for the, for this case. It's August, unless you want to, well, you can't bump the August 10th meeting to the August 3rd, maybe that would cut the notice too short, right?
It wouldn't, but I had to scramble.
Okay, then why don't we think about this case for August 3rd and push back the August 10th meeting if we're not going to have a forum?
But I need to have a date, because I don't want to push it back, I mean, they're wanting to move forward too.
Okay, we got to pick a date for this meeting.
I understand what you're saying.
As long as August 3rd is off the table for the, for the regular meeting to bump up to.
Let's go to September for this, the continuation, and we got to get the 3rd, the 3rd we should do the regular.
Okay, that's what I was asking, is it, does it cut off our notice period too short that we can't do it that day?
Give me a second.
Just a second. I know, I know, I say I have to just hold off, so Chuck.
I can pull it off, I have to.
But you said you'd have to scramble, so can't, I mean, what, what are we doing to you that make you, make you be that?
Need to study the whole, what I, it's, it's. What really, what it really is, is that Jane retired last week, and I had her prepare really for those meetings. I had her prepare for all these meetings ahead of time, figuring where to meet all the towns, so all the notices are prepared in envelopes, ready for me to stick in a mailbox and move forward, so I had to go and open those and change all the notices, we did already do them all, so. That's, that's my biggest issue.
Get posted, if you don't have a forum.
I wondered, I wondered why I had a call from Chuck today.
No reminds.
Right, so I'm trying to figure out a date. Right, so I'm trying to figure out a date for this meeting, and I've made it more out of order, but Chairman Young wanted to say something, it must conflict with the county board meeting?
No, you were talking about a quorum.
Yeah.
I've been in contact with Mrs. Casey, and I will, she still wants to, she's got conflicts in making meetings, and I will be bringing a new ZBA member to the county board this month, so that person should be available.
Well then, here's what you're left with, new member, new member, County Casey, and a potential new member.
Not Kate.
Oh, someone else.
She's one who's asked to be taken off.
Okay, I thought Chuck said she'd be here through August, but, okay.
Just, Mike said during me on September seventh, I moved that meeting up to August thirty-first, I feel if you can count it, because I have, I normally have a conflict on the September seventh, I could probably do it if I had to.
So we move the.
Sess this to the thirty-one, and do a regular hearing on the three, is that?
Do you have more time for this?
Chuck, do you really need, you need a week more for the regular meeting to do everything? Because I know you're short here.
I expect in August.
I mean, I'm thinking maybe, the regular meeting goes from the tenth to seventeen or something.
It's just needs a new channel, whatever.
Twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-first.
Do you have things on these, Jennifer's thirty-first already?
I do not, I'm looking for it, because, not next, no, not.
They can put either one there then, okay, somebody just needs to make a motion.
Make a motion, we recess this particular hearing case until August thirty-first, one seventeen.
Okay.
At seven o'clock.
At seven P M.
Okay, got a motion?
Okay.
Got a second? Okay, all in favor, sitting by, we say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this case, this hearing for this case is recessed to August thirty-first at seven P M, in which room?
All in staying up, moving to.
In this room, okay, all right, thank you.
Was that, I don't know, somebody's got to run it up like that.
I had it on the thirty-first, yeah, I had it on my.